Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022 to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. We'll begin our meeting by asking Pastor Alan Baggett with Connect Church in Palaca to come forward to give our invocation, and Commissioner Rawls will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Father God, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this day, for, Lord, this is the day that you've made, and we will rejoice in it and be glad. We thank you, Lord, for this great nation in which we live. We thank you, Lord, for the great state of Florida, and we thank you, Lord, that we can call Putnam County our home. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for each of the commissioners, for their service, Lord, to this county. Lord, we bless them, and we thank you, Lord, for them. We thank you, Lord, for each one, Lord, that has worked so hard to facilitate this meeting today. Father, we ask you, God, to be in our midst today as we make direct, as we make decisions. We ask you, Lord, that you would direct them. Lord, your word tells us that we are to trust in you with all of our heart and lean not into our own understanding. But, Lord, as we do that, Lord, you said you will direct our steps as we acknowledge you, and we thank you, Lord, for that. Father, we pray all these things in your son's most precious name, his name is Jesus, so we thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Baggett, and thank you Commissioner Rawls. Commissioners, our first item of business is approval of the minutes as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a proper motion to approve in a proper second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and they go saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Three minutes passed. Commissioners, you have a revised agenda. We had a few changes. We'll not do the Hometown Heroes proclamation, but we did add a hurricane update from Public Safety Director Grimes and some of his staff, so that will be on there. We're going to deviate a little bit from our agenda this morning, and we're going to move down to presentations and get those out of the way before we move back up to our Port Authority meeting. So if I could ask J.R. Grimes to come down and some of his staff. We have the first proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through 15th, and I've asked Commissioner Rawls to read this proclamation.
This is proclamation number 2022-098. Whereas, whereas the county of Putnam, is this a little bit loud? I'm getting a lot of. Can you turn me down a little bit? It's very loud. Whereas the county of Putnam is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county, and whereas the fire, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at great risk from fire. Whereas home fires caused 2,265, 265 civilian deaths in the United States in 2021 according to National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to dangers in the event of a fire in which you have little, as little as two minutes to escape safely. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Putnam County residents should be sure that everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Putnam County residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plans are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to serve over fire. And whereas Putnam County residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide detectors meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. And whereas Putnam County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires, home fire injuries throughout, through the prevention and protection of education. And whereas Putnam residents that are responsive to public education measure, measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from home fires, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind the public that it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, Chairman of the Board of Putnam County Commission, do hereby proclaim October 9th, October 9th through 15th, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout the state, and I urge that all people of Putnam County to plan the practice of home fire escape, Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Putnam Fire and Emergency Services. Done, ordered, adopted on this 11th day of October. Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
We've got a proper motion to approve this proclamation in a proper second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and they go saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Congratulations and thank you. So we have with us our Fire Chief Chad Hutchins and Fire Inspector Clue Wright and Public Safety Director J.R. Grimes, so I ask you each one of you to say a few words, if you would.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to come to you today, and thank you for the proclamation that you had given us and awareness for Fire Prevention Week. Just to let you know, this is a team effort here in Putnam County, and we work together with the city of Palaca also, but it's our goal and mission, you know, to try to save every life in Putnam County and try to do that with every firefighter. And again, I say thank you to do that, and just to let you know, we investigate all fires a hundred percent here in Clay County to try to determine a cause and the origin of that. So again, thank you.
Putnam County. You left Clay County a long time ago.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls, and thank you for all the firefighters that participated. Our next proclamation is to celebrate the 247th birthday of the U.S. Navy. And the representative cannot be here this morning, but we do have two veterans on our dais. I've asked Navy veteran Commissioner Adams Ak to read the proclamation, and also Commissioner Rawls is a Navy veteran. So if, sir, go Navy. Are there any other Navy veterans in the audience? Or Army or any other veterans who would like to join me at the podium? Commissioner Rawls, would you join me at the podium, or would we do this proclamation?
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-099, United States Navy 247th Birthday. Whereas the United States Navy is the only military service mandated as a requirement in the Constitution of the United States. And whereas the United States Navy is known to be the largest and most advanced force in the world, on October 13th, 2022, the United States Navy will be celebrating its 247th birthday. And whereas the United States Navy is a seaborne branch of the military and handles operations on and under the sea, in the air, and on the ground with a span of 100 international ports and the open ocean. And whereas it is the highest combined fleet tonnage and world's largest aircraft carrier fleet, has 290 deployable combat vessels and more than 3,900 operational aircrafts. And whereas on December 3rd, 1775, five, the Alfred, a merchant ship purchased by the Continental Congress, was commissioned under the captain Dudley Salton Stoll, and became the first to fly what would become the American flag. And whereas a Navy sailor generally serves a term of four years aboard one of the Navy's 290 deployable ships. And whereas Navy sailors work across a wide range of roles, from shipboard and submariner to aircraft and land jobs. And whereas the United States Navy has more than 347,000 active duty service members, 297,000 civilian employees, 101,000 reserve personnel. And whereas an active duty Navy sailor can be assigned to any vessel, but would only be assigned to the submariner fleet if the sailor volunteered to do so. And whereas over 7,000 veterans call Putnam County home year round, and additional 10,000 veterans calling Putnam County home during the winter months. Now therefore be it proclaimed, we Putnam County Board of County Commissioners to hereby recognizing, congratulate the United States Navy on the occasion of its 247th birthday on this 11th day of October, and recognize those sailors who are currently serving and have served our nation with courage, with honor, courage and commitment. Go Navy. I have moved to promote this proclamation.
Second. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Adams Ak, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and they go saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Congratulations. Okay, is Lori Staven here? Is she in attendance? Okay, we're going to go ahead and do the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so I've asked Commissioner Harvey to read that proclamation as I'll go to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In honor of this, I wore my purple for domestic violence, so just to let you know. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-100, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a crime that impacts all citizens of Putnam County, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide ranging, taking a dramatic toll on the criminal justice system, law enforcement, the healthcare community, and society as a whole. And whereas each year in Putnam County, an estimated one in four women and one in nine men are victims of domestic violence that would translate to 13,000 individuals affected in our county. And whereas it is vital for our community to support the victims of domestic violence and assist with their grave financial, physical, and psychological losses, and to impose legal sanctions against perpetrators of personal violence. And whereas the Lee Conley House is the only domestic violence center in Putnam County providing 24-hour service and counseling to victims and their families, and has been awarded certifications through the Florida Department of Children and Families. And whereas the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners urges all citizens to actively participate in and support all programs sponsored by the Lee Conley House, thereby assisting in the elimination of domestic violence in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, that October 2022 is designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Putnam County to participate in planned activities benefiting the Lee Conley House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families. Done, ordered, and adopted this 11th day, October 22nd. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this proclamation.
Second. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further, okay, seeing none, all in favor, and they go saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could take a point of privilege real quick, just to thank the Board for doing that proclamation. Last I looked, I think our office processed well over 500 domestic violence injunctions in a year, so that's well over an average of one a day. So that's a, it's a pretty, pretty shocking metric when you, when you look at it number, number wise. So I think it's a, to put it in real world terms, it's a, it's a very important thing to, and it's very good that the Board is bringing attention to it, so thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank Commissioner Adams Ak for bringing to the Board the fact that we had supported Lee Connie with a financial donation, and we were able to do that again this year, so, okay, thank you, Matt. Okay, is Ms. Sharon Barnes here? From the Putnam County Genealogical Society? Did we get it out to invite these people here today? Okay, all right, we're going to go ahead and do the Family History Month proclamation, 22, 2022-101. I've asked Commissioner Turner to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-01, 2022 Family History Month. Whereas in 2001, a bill was introduced making October Family History Month, and whereas the entire month dedicated to finding and preserving the memories of our ancestors, and whereas part of Family History Month activities, you could visit online genealogy sites, a research library, interview your older relatives, and if possible, have a family reunion. And whereas add your own family photographs and stories to be shared with others and preserve for future generations to enjoy. And whereas during the month of October, take some time to do something that your prosperity, both, both living and those not yet born will appreciate. Prosperity, excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved that Putnam County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 1st through October 31st, 2022 as Family History Month, and calls upon the people of Putnam County to observe this month and join with the Putnam County Genealog- Genealogical Society with appropriate programs, activities, and individual search. Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation.
Second.
We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and they go saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Thank you. Okay, as I said, we're moving the agenda around a little bit, and I will ask J.R. Grimes, we're going to move Julianne's Countywide Update Project to last, and we'll have J.R. and I believe Danielle is with him. Stefan is sick today. And as they come down, I just want to welcome Charles Rudd, the City Manager for Crescent City, Mayor Michelle Myers from Crescent City, Mayor of Walaka, Jamie Watts, City Manager, I believe Don Holmes is back there from the city of Palatka, and I believe Mayor, J.R.'s got you blocked out, Mayor, but Cheryl Hill from Palatka, welcome here this morning. I think I got all the mayors here this morning and their staff, okay? I just want to say we were blessed with this hurricane. Other parts of the state were not so blessed. My son's girlfriend's parents lived there. She grew up at Fort Myers, and when she went there this weekend, she said it was worse than she had anticipated. We probably all have loved ones or know somebody, family members that are, were in that area, and my thoughts and prayers continue to go out for them. I know J.R.'s going to give us an update, and maybe if we have somebody from the Sheriff's Department, he might be able to do it about the teams that we have sent down there. Involved in the emergency operation process this year. This is my third year, six years as a Commissioner, third hurricane, and they've all been damaging to Putnam County and other areas. I just want to say this year that some of the people that were out there was the first time that they were in their particular positions for the county, and I believe they did an outstanding job. We had people that had been out there for years. I'm not saying that some of the staff had not worked for the county or in the city municipalities in different capacities, but the capacities that they were in were new to them for a storm such as this. I think direction from staff, County Administrator and Deputy County Administrator Julianne Holmes Young, the teamwork of all the first responders and firefighters, the law enforcement, Sheriff's Department, the local police departments, the school boards, municipalities, I think were much more involved and aware of the situation, but I just want to commend J.R., you and your staff, Danielle, Stefan Turnipseed, who couldn't be here, who's a emergency director, and Chief Hutchins, Hutchinson, for the job that they did. We prepared for the worst, and we got a little bit of a reprieve. So we still have damage, we still have flooding in areas. So with that said, J.R., I appreciate this update, and I hope there will be quite a few questions, but thank you.
Good morning Commissioners and people in attendance today. First of all, I'd like to say how proud I am of our staff. They did an amazing job. This was the first kind of run through for Ms. Danielle and Stefan. They worked really hard getting prepared, and they did a phenomenal job. They got everything out that we had asked them. I mean, from the coordination, our local health department and the school district getting our shelter set up. At one point, we sheltered over 600 people during the storm. I think it was 15 at the special needs. Shelter was real heavy in South Putnam and the Middleton Burnick. At one time, we had over 200 there, and I think right at 200 in the shelter at Brownie Pierce, but the school district did an amazing job helping us get all those set up and everything done. We had great participation from our municipalities. There were things that they had that we needed, there were things that we had that they needed, so we were able to bring some things together so everybody was kind of together and weren't in just a silo, so it made the operation go really, really smooth. Since then, we have deployed. We got a call, Chief Hutchinson did, I think Thursday afternoon after we had cleared through here, and asked if we could start sending our crews to Southwest Florida, to Fort Myers, which we did accompanied by some crews from the city of Palatka. They, so we sent the first crew down. The first crew came back on Wednesday. It was still a lot of needed help, and they asked if we could send another crew. So they met, again, two from Putnam, two from the city of Palatka, met the original crew in, I believe it was in Orlando, and did a swap out. Maybe it was at Lee County at the, at the football stadium there, they swapped out. The original crew came back home. We got a call yesterday, Chief Hutchinson did, from the state of Florida, and said that they needed crews at least till November 1st, so we're going to try to do like a once-a-week rotation for the crews down there. The report's back, it's just, you know, total devastation, and that could have been here. You know, up until the very last minute, and that cold front pushed, and that thing was, the eye of that storm was coming between Crescent City and Palatka. So that devastation could have been here. I mean, we did have several residents that were, I mean, still are flooded. I was in East River, or West River Park yesterday. It's still, the little canal there is still out of the banks, the roads are still underwater. Sportsman's Harbor in Walaka. Our municipal leaders, Mayor Watts, Mayor Myers, Mayor Hill, the two that joined us, Mayor Smigala and the mayor from Alakan, met us online several times to get the updates so we can make sure that all of the municipalities were briefed on anything that we needed. Other than that, we're back to business as usual, trying to get crews rotated in and out, and they get a day of rest when they get back by the state, so, but the reports that are getting back is just devastation. Chief Hutchinson's told me a story that they measured a 14-foot storm surge on Sanibel Island, and Noah had a wave of 54 feet came in, and as, like he said this morning, our crews are seeing homeowners down there, and they're just showing them videos of their place, and it's just amazing on what that kind of event can do and the devastation that it can cause. So we pray for those folks in Southwest Florida, just let them know that we're here for them, that they need anything. Our local union did a fundraiser kind of deal last week, got some supplies donated, and they took some stuff down to the firefighters in Charlotte County because those folks had not had a chance to go home yet, and they, you know, they didn't have a lot of supplies because supplies weren't great down there, so when they were able to roll in with a trailer from Putnam County to the fire stations down there, just lend them guys a hand, they were over, graciously thankful for everything that had been done and donated to them. So that's pretty much the report today, but I'd just like to thank everybody, the support from you guys, the municipal leaders, our community partners, were absolutely phenomenal in this, so thank you, Chairman.
J.R., can you speak a little bit, and if it's too early, about FEMA, application for FEMA?
Yeah, I got a call yesterday. They're gonna meet Wednesday with Mr. Newbold from the Fair Authority to set up the, they're bringing in a mobile site, and they're gonna try to set the mobile site up, cause there is some events happening at the fairgrounds. So they're gonna be able to do the individual assistance program. The public assistance program has already came through. Of course, there's still some unknowns with public assistance, because a lot of the municipal docks are still underwater, some of the infrastructure that has not been able to been looked at yet, so we're still waiting on some water to receive. I was down in Astor yesterday, I'd take, I'd go to Ocala, and that water's still got to come through here. We got many more days of what we have sitting out there right now, because there, there's still water in the folks' houses in Astor, and it's just all got to pinch through Lake George and end up here. So, but FEMA is, if they're coming, the teams have been deployed. We got a meeting tomorrow with FEMA reps and D E M tomorrow morning at ten a.m. at the fairgrounds to make sure that, to do the site inspection so we can get that up and running.
Okay. All right. Commissioner, Commissioner Rawls?
Did I understand you correctly? Anybody can take material to be ground at the fairgrounds, or does it have to go in via contractor?
No, no, no. This, 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 this is setting up for individual assistance, so if somebody, if something above and beyond their insurance, or they don't have insurance through FEMA, can cover that. We didn't really have enough debris, and Mr. Tilton can speak to the-
Okay. I thought you were talking about the debris, setting up for the debris chipping.
No, sir, no, sir. That's all being handled at the landfill.
Okay.
This is just for assistance for individuals, if they need assistance from FEMA, whether it's replacing, you know, roofs or damage to structures or something like that, individual assistance would be set up there.
Driving around, I still see a lot of debris on the roadside. Have, have the contractors finished their part in here, or are we still collecting and hauling?
We didn't, other than yard debris.
People are still putting stuff out, look.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been working with sanitation, that's being covered by in-house. We didn't think there was enough out there really to engage a contractor, and Mr. Tilton can speak to that. I mean, he's working on getting piles and all picked up for us, so between them and Waste Pro, we've been working on that in-house.
Okay. Thank you.
Jay, can you come, I'm gonna put you on the spot, I guess I'm gonna put you on the spot. Can you come speak to that? Cause I did have an email yesterday, and those are some of the questions. And I was under, understanding that we did not have enough debris to enter in with a contractor, and, and people are wondering how to get the stuff off the road.
Mr. Chairman, while he's walking up here, it seems like every weather event we have we go through the same issue of we need to get the trash up within the next two days, but what we end up finding, what we end up finding is, is that if you pick it up too quick, you end up picking it up four times. So you, you got to kinda let the stuff get out by the road for two or three weeks, and then go pick it up, and then you can basically make one pass, and what's left is usually just the stuff that's left, that's leftover. So you've got to give it a little bit of time, as inconvenient as it might be, and try to keep the safety issues down. If it's a getting too close to the road or something, and pick them up first, but otherwise, you've almost just got to let it settle for a few weeks. If you don't, you'll be out there four times instead of once.
Okay.
So, yes, yes, sir. So what we've done is, is we've actually, we're working with Waste Pro, and we've asked them to pick up what they can, and then we're gonna work in-house with our grapple truck to help pick up the rest. We really, we made the determination that it wasn't, there wasn't enough out there to, to bring in a, a full-blown contractor. So we've also, you know, opened up all of our sites, and they can bring stuff in, and we're trying to make the, the best of a bad situation for helping bring that material into the landfill and, and to the offsites, and then get it here the best we can, and we're gonna do what we can between us and Waste Pro to get it cleaned up. And then, of course, the flooded areas, we'll just have to see as people put furniture and stuff out, or what, you know, how we're gonna try to handle that as we get closer and it's out there and account for it all.
Commissioner Harvey?
I just really want to say thank you to JR, your staff, Danielle. It was just a well-oiled machine that really worked very well, and Chief Hutchinson, everybody that was involved, and you too, Mr. Chairman. I know you spent a lot of time there. That's what the chairman does, but people don't realize how much time you really spend there, and how much sacrifice you give. Mr. Tilton, I thank you for the call yesterday on that problem with debris, and I agree with Commissioner Turner. Sometimes people are quick to rush out there and build a pile on the side of the road, but we all know it's coming, as trees fall down and limbs get taken down. So we appreciate you working with the person yesterday, and your attitude about trying to get this cleaned up. You know, no doubt, in a perfect world, there wouldn't be any, but if this is the, the worst we have to deal with, we can handle that, and that, that's a good situation to have, because you're right, there's people. I went down to Arcadia, Oak, we delivered some supplies, you know, and there wasn't a lot of damage I saw, but there was a lot of flooding, and cows up to their, up to their chests in water, you know, and it's sad to see all the flooding that really took place. I know we got some in South Florida, but, I mean, South, but truly, you know, we were blessed by that storm changing just a little, a little course, cause it was a mighty storm. Thank you. Thank you for all your help.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, JR. Before y'all, before JR and Danielle go back, I want to welcome Mayor Joseph Sgala from town of Pomona Park. Would any of the elected officials, the mayors or city administrators like to make any comments? I also want to thank the Putnam County staff that was out there in different capacities from serving at one of the computers, or actually in the kitchen, or whatever. It was a great camaraderie, and we took care of everybody's needs. It was really, really very, very enjoyable to be around everybody.
Chairman, if I could just say one more, cause there, there was a little bit of a misconception out there. When people dialed the three-two-nine nineteen oh four hotline number, that is not dispatchers, that is general information. That's our library staff, or I T. staff, or one of those folks that are answering the phone for generalized questions. So if somebody's watching this today and you truly have an emergency or you need something, that is not the number to call for an emergency. So, I mean, and some people were a little disappointed when they reached out to talk to somebody that they didn't know where a specific area of the county was, but you've gotta remember, those folks are not sitting in front of a nine-one-one disc screen, they're sitting in front of a computer taking generalized information questions. So I did want to point that out this morning, just so, as you're talking to folks, that is general information only. If you have a true emergency or anything like that, you need to call nine-one-one, or if you need some kind of immediate response, please dial the, the non-emergency number at the sheriff's office at the three-two-nine zero eight hundred. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Hill?
Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the city of Palatka, I think I speak for all the cities in general, we just want to give kudos and thank you to the leadership of both Director Grimes, as well as Chairman Suggs, and you as well, Chairman Pickens, and the staff and the first responders who worked tirelessly on this issue along with the various community organizations and state organizations throughout. The work that took place during the hurricane incident was, was just a prime example of what happens when all of Putnam County comes together, works collaboratively. We continually talk about one Putnam under God, but we truly had that, and the collaborations really show how strong this community is in times of trouble. If we can take the same efforts that we have during the storm incident and use those year round, I guarantee you, this community will continue to prosper and continue to grow. The leadership, the coordination, the ability to work with one another, to send first responders out together, the sacrifices made by staff alone and first responders was just absolutely overwhelming. We've continued to do that for years in and years out, but I think every year we do it, we get better, and I, and that's really what it's all about. Had some new individuals in the room, but they came on board, and they worked tirelessly throughout, and this is one of the first times that we've had all the mayors really participate in the same manner that we've had over the years, and so special thanks out to our new mayors, both Mayor Myers and Mayor Watts for the work that they did as well. But I, I'm just extremely grateful for this opportunity. Also, kudos to our City Commissioner, Don Holmes, for being out there as well, and, and being at the helm in Jonathan Ripley, as well as Chief Shaw, Chief Taylor, just a wonderful job all around. And even on the post-storm incidents and the trainings that took place, they were second on, they were very informative, and we were able to bring organizations together again for the purposes of making sure that we dealt with quotas and numbers that had to be met from a FEMA standpoint, and everyone, I think, was truly educated as to what the process is and how we continually move forward. So again, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Hill. Mayor Watts?
Good morning. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Mayor Hill. We really appreciate the county and what, what they did for us. Executive Director Grimes kept us in the loop as we moved forward. Our County Administrator, Terry Suggs, was there, answered my phone calls, whether it was six o'clock in the morning or eight o'clock at night, and we appreciate the support that y'all provided to us. We still have flooding in our area. I've got about four streets down there that are still halfway flooded. I tried to take my golf cart down one the other night, and I got stuck down there. But we're, the water's starting to recede a little bit, we're starting to see kind of a level off with the water in the river, where hopefully to not see it go too high as the rest of the water flushes from Astor down this way. We ended up with fifty-four dump trucks full of debris, and Commissioner, you're correct, because it was like the Easter Bunny. Every time we would go by and pick it up, we would come by five minutes later, and there would be another pile of debris there. So it was a little bit of a challenge, but at the end of the day, even the challenge that came from the debris, our residents appreciated how quickly that we moved to get the community cleaned up and get us back online. And I told them, we had the Florida Division of Mercy Management come through, and I told the guys, I go, "You guys are doing too good a job of cleaning the town up. They're coming through to look at our town, and they don't look like anything happened down here." So, but we appreciate your support. We did have the U.S. Senator Marco Rubio sent some staff down. We had about twenty-five people show up and did some pre-registration for FEMA assistance in Putnam County, and when you get the information concerning FEMA at the, at the fairgrounds, we'd appreciate getting that information as well. But it was a learning experience. My staff and I were up for forty straight hours keeping the water, sewer, and lights on in the town. I will, I'd like to give kudos to the Florida Power and Light. I called her twelve times, and every time I called, she was on top of it. We had about two hours of power outage in the town of Wallaca. They kept coming out, and they kept restoring power, and in fact, Doug was our lineman that came out, and we actually give him a hat, made him an honorary part of the town, and we appreciated him hanging around that day, cause he kept the lights on for sure. But we appreciate the work that y'all did, and, and we, you know, it's, it's good to see the, the municipal officials in the, in the cities and in the county as we all work together, and it demonstrates, as, as Mayor Hill said, how, how much we can move forward and how we can all work to serve the same residents. I served the same residents that you serve in Putnam County, and it's good that we can work together and do what's important for them, and, and set everything aside and do that. So we appreciate the work that y'all did for us, and we look forward to working for in the, in the future with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Watts, and, okay. And Michelle, before you start, Jamie did, he set the record, he called me at five-thirty Thursday morning. And I stayed at the E O C, so I'd just gotten out of the shower, and I'd go, "Golly, he's calling me at five-thirty." So he answered, but he was checking on to see if the representatives from Florida Power and Light were at the E O C, and to get hold of them. But before you go, Michelle, again, you, sometimes you just leave people out, but Florida Power and Light and Clay Electric did a fantastic job preparing and getting our electric back on, both of them. Most people were out just a few hours, I think I was out twelve or thirteen, I've heard some, you know, and maybe twenty, but you gotta give kudos to, to that group too, because they also have customers. Florida Power and Light have them in South Florida too, so. Anyway, welcome, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you for your words, you know, speaking for all of us, and I think we all feel that way. As we all know, at one point, for about twenty-four hours, that I was headed right to Lake Crescent, and I remember when they said that, and I had to say, did they just say Lake Crescent? And they, they did. And, but I have to say that going through that, there was a calmness, I think, amongst all of us, knowing that, that you were there and you had our backs. And, you know, I want to thank you, Administrator Suggs, Julianne, I want to thank you as well for your support, for your constant reaching out to us. I know our City Manager, Charles Rudd, you were there for him every step of the way. You know, for both of us, this was a new experience, and there's a lot of unknowns. And, you know, so I just really want to thank you, that it just gave us some peace of mind. We did the same thing like Jamie said, that we quit keeping count. I, I turned to Charles a moment ago and said, "How many loads did we take out of there?" And he says, "We quit keeping count." But you know, I've said all along that I'd much rather pick up sticks and twigs than rebuild lives, and there's a lot of people right now that are rebuilding lives. And my daughter, she was in the storm, she was in Fort Myers, so I had that, she'll never do that again. And just what she has shared with me, it's, we are so, so, so very blessed, but we're all so blessed to have each and every one of you. And I just also want to say thank you, Chairman Pickens, because from the very beginning of my tenure, and Mayor Watts's, you encouraged us to work together and to be a team, and I think together, we're all successful when we work together, and we saw that this last couple of weeks, and I just want to thank you for everything.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Joe?
Good morning. Pomona Park was pretty much unscathed, a few trees come down, mostly it was branches and leaves. I want to thank you for the communication. I didn't get involved with all of the terrible things that happened to my neighbors. But I want to give a big kudo to the residents of Pomona Park, getting up Friday morning to check out the whole town, see what's going on. I can't tell you how many residents were on the streets with blowers, they're riding mowers, blowing the twigs and leaves off the clean, the community itself came together, and I want to express that here, cause I think it's important. But again, thanks for your communication. I listened to all the meetings, I didn't come up because I was down there. But anyway, thank all of you guys, and thanks, Bill, for you.
Thank you, Mayor Joe. Anybody else?
I may just say one more thing. Mr. Chair, I, I just think that the staff, the sacrifices that were made by every employee and every official within the county deserve a round of applause, and so let's give them a round of applause. Many of, many of them were away from their homes and their families for a week, and I, I think that, that often goes unnoticed if an incident only takes about eighteen hours for the actual storm incident to come in place. But the work that was put in place is just, is commendable, and the sacrifices are just, they're, they're unreal, particularly during a time where we find ourselves understaffed with first responders and, and our public works individuals. So I, I just think that it, we just have to make sure that we continually say thank you to the people who keep this community in the places where it is. Also, Commissioners, thank you as well, because while you may not have necessarily been at the E O C, you were sending messages out to your, to your citizens, and I think that goes lost on what roles you play within this entire process. So again, thank you, as well as all the other electives throughout, who continue to send out a unified message for Putnam County citizens, so that they would continue to be informed.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Before I, y'all sit down, Administrator Suggs, I'll say a few things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to know why we're successful in standing here today? And, you know, nothing that we do here is more important than preparing for these type of events, and having everybody that's here today is a great representation of how we come together when it's necessary and do the things that are needed for our community. I can't say enough positive things about the staff themselves, how they came together. The chairman sitting to my right during the entire event was, was very crucial to making those decisions, and making sure that we had everything covered. You know, the school board plays a, a huge part in this with the shelters, the sheriff's office, we're getting everything set up. It was a lot of moving parts to make sure that we're prepared, and everything just seemed to really come together well. And again, I, I attribute that to the fact that everybody participated, from the elected officials to the, to the municipal managers, to the staff. One of the things that we did early on in the preparation was, each one of the municipalities got together, was we started dividing up and conquering as far as where equipment was gonna be staged, who had what piece of equipment, where were we gonna go? We had an issue at one time with potential fuel. City Manager Holmes jumped on the phone, made a call, a couple of calls, and got some contacts, and got fuel delivered. That's how we functioned in these events, and I, as the County Administrator, absolutely couldn't say, say enough good things about what we did this past event, from our staff and to the municipals, because it was just a well, well-oiled machine. Everybody just came together and worked really hard, and I promised the library staff yesterday who was doing the in-service training, that I was gonna make sure today that I pointed out that they're the ones who run the call center for us, twenty-four-seven when these events happen, and without them, information would not be able to get disseminated to where it needed to get. So they're vital, and they're, they're critical to this as well, and to everybody that did leave home and come and camp out D O C, make sure the event was, was, was well-prepared for. Thank you, and again, thank you Commissioners for, for what you do for us as well, and thank all of you Commissioners and mayors and municipal leaders as well. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Administrator Suggs. Commissioner Harvey?
You know, Mayor Hill said something just a second ago, Mr. Chairman, and, and how the Commissioners stepped up and sent information out. Danielle, honestly, I've been through a few storms, every one, I guess, it's- Every one, I guess, it's kind of probably never had a baby in my life. So I don't know the experience of childbirth, but I'll say every event's different. And this year, I believe we got better information than we've ever had in the past. And it was so easy to click on your page, pull that information and share it. It was, you didn't have to recreate or what I heard on the street or what I thought I heard at five-thirty in the morning. You didn't have to do that. It was very precise, very informational. You grabbed it, shared it, end of story. And it was, it was, it was very well done. I'm sure we learned a lot and as we go forward, we're going to do even better. But I tell you, I couldn't have got better information than what I got during this storm event. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. JR, you want to wrap it up?
Well, I think we missed a couple of important key factors. Is, is our sheriff's office and our Department of Corrections, they supplied us inmate labor to help assist our citizens with sandbags, getting out in front of the storm. I mean, there was a few things that needed to be done in some specific areas. And I mean, Stefan worked with the Department of Corrections, were able to get a couple of extra crews. Colonel Wells stepped right up and they were able to send one of their crews with a sandbag in sight. And, you know, we, we went through that and, you know, we talked about the Florida Power and Light. You know, one time the, the number of homes in Putnam County that hadn't had power was twelve thousand, which is a lot of, a lot of our homes, you know? So one thing we learned during Hurricane Irma that was really successful was that if we would send a FPNL, kind of like a hotshot crew out there to disconnect the power, our fire rescue folks and public works crews and stuff like that could get out there and if they de-energized the lines, we could go and get the trees and stuff knocked out for them. So we actually attached FPNL crews and they didn't mind if it was Clay Electric's lines. They'd make sure they were de-energized. We were able to send crews out there and they were attached to our fire rescue folks that are cleaning the streets and public works and getting de-energized. We had all of the trees and the power lines done. So when the restoration crews got there, the only thing they really had to do was put the power line back together. So that was a lesson we learned back in Hurricane Irma and we're just so thankful for what FPNL and Clay Electric had done to get our power restored back to our citizens. And, you know, our public works crew did a phenomenal job getting our sand, sand sites set up and delivered through the work that they did. I mean, it was just, just a, a great overall experience. I appreciate the opportunity to, to be with the crews. I think it was, I mean, we've learned a lot, we've made mistakes, but we fixed them real quick and moved on. But overall, I think we had a very successful event and just thank all of you guys for your support and everything that you did. Thank you.
Thank you, JR. Let's give them a hand. Okay. Yeah, let's get a picture while everybody's here. Y'all just want to line up in the front.
Why don't you be front and center? Hopefully you see anybody over there. You bring the beauty to the whole thing. All ready?
Stand right there. No, you're good.
Julianne, can you be seen?
We're, we're, we're all the way to the camera.
We like Jim standing on the chair.
And I want to personally, as chairman, thank everybody for taking time out of their busy schedule to show up for this meeting, for the update. And just want to thank everybody for their participation. So, okay, we'll move down to Julianne, the countywide project update.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman. Just a reminder, this is not an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by county departments. This is meant to be a snapshot of those most important to our commission, our citizens, and/or our administration. We start this morning with administrative projects of the port project. The port, Marchport feasibility study conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is in progress with an estimated completion date of July of 2024. A consultant compiles an economic report to reinforce the feasibility study of pending submissions to the corpse. The final draft is being reviewed and tweaked by the consultant. The Army Corps engineer, economist, and staff. The application for the Port Infrastructure Development Program grant with the United States Maritime Administration has been submitted and is currently being reviewed. Staff has also developed and submitted a grant application with the State's Department of Economic Opportunity Rural Infrastructure Fund Grant Program to supplement the federal funds sought to finance an extensive and comprehensive report for port development plan. Putnam County was statutorily admitted to the Florida Seaport Transportation Economic Development Council when Governor Ron DeSantis signed Florida House Bill 907 into law. In August of 22, the Florida Ports Council unanimously added Putnam County to its ranks. The animal control facility project, the evaluation team has been selected and the RFP for a design build firm to construct the animal control facility was published on September 26, 2022 and is underway. Building and grounds roofing projects, the Ag Center roof is complete. The governmental complex project is reviewing the punch list items to finalize the project. Emergency services undergoing an ISO rating re-evaluation. On September 20th at 9:00 a.m., we had our ISO onsite survey and it has been completed. We expect to receive the results of the countywide ISO rating in approximately six months. Information Technology has a few projects. The phone system E911 caller ID updates is in progress. Networking is working to update the E911 address and caller IDs for the phone system. The project is ongoing. Now, security assessment is in process. The networking on a comprehensive assessment of our network and potential security issues is an ongoing project. Smart Cop map project is nearly completion. GIS has submitted their final map for review to Smart Cop. Georgetown UFIFIS served as a liaison to secure a graduate student for the University of Florida. The conceptual drawings along suggested suggestions for completing certain requirements of the grant with the Florida Communities Trust was presented to departmental staff in July. The final tweaks to those documents are being made. Once the consultants are finished, they will be received by the, by the county staff and then presented to the B OCC. Parks and Rec, the Florida Home Park Historic Building. Triple S has connected the water and the septic to the building. The building inspector has signed off on a rough installation. In addition, the drywall has been installed with a plaster veneer finish at a cost of about $5,500. We are a bit short on the to accomplish this, so each of our board members personally contributed to the remaining funds needed. In 2023, Palmetto Hall will celebrate its hundredth birthday and it is our plan with the assistance provided by the county to finally be able to celebrate the grand opening of the beautiful historic building. Parks and Recreation Pickleball Angle Park, a formal award was made by the B OCC on August ninth. Contract documents are in process. Construction is expected to begin at the end of October. Public Works has Fort Gates Ferry Landing. Welding activities are underway and the project is anticipated to be complete in October. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing, Palm Avenue to CSX Crossing at the Placa Fire Department. The contract for CEI Services has been awarded and coordination with FDOT is underway to obtain authorization to advertise. Advertisement for construction services is anticipated to begin this month. County Road 310 Rehabilitation, the executed submerged land easement has been obtained from the state and coordination with FDOT is underway to obtain authorization to advertise. Advertisement for construction services is anticipated to begin this month. Septic to Sewer Conversion Phase Three, the pre-construction meeting has been completed and the notice to proceed is scheduled for September first. The project is anticipated to be completed by February 28, 2023. Sawyer Salem Bowl Green Drainage Project, the project is complete. Dirt to Pave 2021, paving activities on Park, Whitehall, Nancy, Lloyd, Lynn, Ida, Dixon, Sandy, North Lake Drive, South Lake, George Drive, Palm, and Atkins are complete. Norwood, Tropic, Cypress, Walt, and Balsam are expected to be completely paved by early November. Construction activities on Darren are scheduled to begin in October and all roads are to be completed by December of 2022. Dirt to Pave 2022, a final list was discussed at the September workshop. Public Works is seeking proposals for design services. East Putnam Drainage and Flooding Communication Phases One through Four. Phase Three, construction activities are underway and anticipated to be completed by November 29, 2022. Phase Four, permitting and design activities are underway. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement, State Road 19 to County Road 309C. The notice to proceed has been issued to the contractor and construction activities are scheduled to begin, to be completed in April of 2023. St. John's Avenue Multi-Use Trail, construction is anticipated to begin in Octo, I'm sorry, September 2023. South Palm Sidewalk, Drood Street to Silver Lake Drive, the supplemental agreement was sent to FDOT for execution, the allocation, to allocate the additional funds needed to complete the project. The executed agreement has been obtained from FDOT. Staff will present for formal award. Saratoga Harbor Drainage Project, Gibbs Avenue. Public Works is seeking alternative proposals to complete the project using the alternative means approved by the B OCC. James A. Long Elementary, Jenkins Middle School is safe routes of school. A hundred percent design plans are under review by FDOT. Public Works anticipates a construction funding agreement from FDOT in October. Once obtained, it will be presented to the B OCC for formal approval and execution. County Road 315 Resurfacing Project, sixty percent of the design plans are scheduled to be obtained this month. The final design is expected to be completed by February of 2023. Port Buena Vista Wastewater Treatment Plant Conversion and Sewer Main Extension. Advertisement for construction services are anticipated this month. Paradise Point Sewer Hardening System Hardening and Generator Installation. The project has been advertised and bids are due October 20, 2022. County Guard Rail Installation Repairs and Replacements, the pre-construction meeting has been completed and activities are anticipated to be complete by April of 2023. County Road Resurfacing 2022, the contract has been awarded and pre-construction meeting is scheduled for early October. Countywide Striving Project, the project is underway. East Placa Septic to Sewer Project Phase Four, Public Works is currently awaiting a proposal from the engineering consultant to complete the design criteria package. Public Works anticipates having a criteria package complete in October and advertised for a design build firm in November of 2022. Countywide Bridge Repairs, the pre-construction meeting has been completed and activities are anticipated to be completed by April 2023. East Placa Water Plant Retrofrit Project, the project is underway. Barden Ranchant Road Resurfacing Project, advertisement for construction is anticipated October of 2022. This concludes my update.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Julianne. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, I probably, you need to go ahead first. I just hit my button ahead of you. On the sewer grant project of Buena Vista, when we put that on the street, did we ask for an alternate of what it would cost to run water at the same time? I don't know if it would be a big deal or not, but if we're already running sewer out there, it might be that we need to put in some pipe or some water too. And it just may be too much money. I don't know, but if we could have maybe.
We can run that by, we have to get concurrence on that document to advertise as is. We can run that by the funding partner and determine whether or not they let us have that alternate in the bid.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If we could, it might be the opportunity to get that first leg done. I just don't know.
Yes, sir.
Did we ever decide what, and this may be a public works question, but we, did we ever decide what route we're taking with the sewer? Are we going out, are we going out to 207A and up 207A of Putnam County Boulevard to 207A or are we going down Highway 207?
I'm going to have to look that up and get back to you, sir.
That's fine. You can. But I was hoping we could go out Putnam County Boulevard and up 207A just because that gives us opportunity to town all those other driveways and mailboxes all the way out where if we go up 207, there's not going to be as much expansion area as there are if we went out the other way.
No problem.
So if we have the option, I'd like to try to go that way if we could.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Young, and I know this is, I just, this is really just for public knowledge, the Norwood paving street area.
Yes, sir.
I did get a complaint about that and I know Mr. Nimitz sent me, the contractor's having a hard time finding the product, the asphalt. So we kind of knew that was coming. We talked about that months ago. We knew supply chain was breaking down, but as soon as that contractor can do it, you know, it'd be really nice because people, yeah, okay, I'll leave it alone. And Mr. Suggs, last night, the lady, and I just lost her name, Safe Route Schools over there, you remember? Okay, I know, I lost it. But that's that drainage area where the, the sidewalk had a wooden platform over top of it. That's all going to be fixed thanks to Mr. Suggs, Mr. Ladd, and Mr. Rodriguez for fixing that, extending that culvert and putting concrete sidewalk over top of it. Appreciate your help there. And she was very ecstatic that, you know, we could make that change pretty quick. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner, do you have another comment? Okay. You have a comment? Thank you, Julianne. A lot of projects going on in Putnam County as you can see from that lengthy list, so. We're going to take a three-minute recess where we'll go into Port Authority. Lot of projects going on in Putnam County, as you can see from that lengthy list, so. We're gonna take a three-minute recess where we go into Port Authority. We're in the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I'd like to go ahead and move up to the Port Authority, so I will recess the meeting, and I'll call the Port Authority meeting to order. First item, the Business Commissioner has approved the amendments as presented.
Mr. Chairman, our approval of the amendments is stated in our packet.
They got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Adams-Zack. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and if you see aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, we do have one item, Item B, but I'm gonna open it up for public comment before we move to that item. So any individuals wishing to make public comment on a Port Authority item, if you'd please come forward. We do have one speaker card, Mr. Charlie Palmer. If you'd come forward and you could state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments around three minutes.
Three minutes? Just kidding. Charles Palmer, 4004 Shady Oak Court, Lake Mary, Florida. My company, Palmer Group, was the developer. I'm proud to deliver to the county a significant taxpayer. We have gotten all the permitting done on the cottages at St. John's, which is in the city, across the street from the business park. So it's about a $30 million project that we started. Larry Harvey entered, we had a meeting in 2017. He said, please come look at Putnam County. We have a demand, a need for housing and development, and we have, and we have delivered, like I said, about a $30 million market rate rental property. During that period in 2017, our company made a presentation to commissioners for a joint venture. Mr. Adams-Zack, you weren't here, but the rest of the fellows all saw the presentation. The idea then was for the Palmer Group to provide some development services, some analysis services of the park property, and see if there was a higher, better use than the industrial zoning that was there. It was tabled at the time. We got involved with the cottages at St. John's, so we moved forward with that, and we never did come back around and pick up that topic. What brought me here today was someone has made an offer or a letter of intent, would like for the port to negotiate a letter of intent to buy some of the parcels in the park. We have looked at all the parcels in the park for several years. We have been working with our development partners, and we have a particular plan for the park that would involve more than the particular acres that are being requested to negotiate. Certainly think it's a, the good news is that somebody's interested in really doing something with the park on industrial level. I have questions on the size of the venture, et cetera. That's your business. What I'm requesting today is that we have, I've sent you guys, you commissioners, a letter, putting on, you on, not on notice, but letting you know that we have been working on a letter of intent for several parcels, and they happen to include these two that are under the letter of intent. So we will, we will go forward with our letter to the Port Authority, and so my request showing up today is that, is there a process in the, in the Port Authority to process, I guess that's my timer, what is the process if you happen to have two letters of intent in play at the same time? How do we make sure that it's open information for everybody? Is there a, is there a process? And my, my, our request is that you publish some kind of a process so that any party that wants to make an offer for any parcel, if it happens to be competing with someone else, how does that process get taken care of? How does staff do it? How does it, how does it get handled? So that's my real purpose today.
Okay. All right, Mr. Palmer, thank you for your comments. I don't, we don't, we don't have any in process right now, but I know we may have one after this meeting, but you have not presented any letter of intent, have you?
No, sir. It's in process. It'll be here this week.
Okay. All right, I guess could staff get with Mr. Palmer about any of the, any of the direction of how to move forward with that, if he chooses to do so?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman's staff will, will absolutely meet with ID that wants to bring any type of a letter of intent to the, to the Board of County Commissioners, in this case, to Port Authority, that they would like to bring. As you know, this is not the first time we sold property over there. We sold property to, to the business Camarca. We also sold property that surrounded the P R C building, so the process is pretty much is, is an open process that a letter of intent needs to be supplied to the Port Authority.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Keep in mind, I'm just a roofer, not a lawyer, thank goodness.
Could you speak up just a little bit, Mr. Turner?
Doing the best I can, Charlie. Would you turn my microphone up a hair, please, if you can, without it singing? We're having some issues with these microphones right now. I'm certainly no attorney and don't claim to be one, but it seems to me like if we end up taking the, a letter of intent, then that would tie up that piece of property through the time period of letter intent. If the letter of intent fell through and they purchased the property, then it would be available again, but that wouldn't prevent a letter of intent on any of the additional parcels that are not being talked about today. I mean, it'd be no different than the one that's sold. We don't control it anymore. So basically, if it's voted on today, the letter of intent, then I don't think there is a process that you could circumvent that, other than you could turn another letter, and if that one falls through, continued upon that one following, falling through, but it wouldn't be first, first letter of intent. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur, Mr. Palmer. I think that right now we have an offer on the table that we're gonna be talking about in a few moments. You said there was other parcels outside of this partial, so if your letter of intent comes this week, it could appropriate those parcels outside of this one, if the board chooses to go forward or not go forward, but this is the offer at hand, and this is what, and it's no different than what came before, is before somebody wanting to buy a property and inquired to. So it's, I think it's kind of a first come, first served, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may respond?
Yes.
I think there's a difference between a letter of intent and a contract. Your comments, Mr. Turner, are absolutely correct. If the property's under contract, even if it was a look period, and if it falls through, I mean, it's under, it's off the table. It's, it's not on the marks under contract. However, there's a difference between that and a letter of intent. If you have one letter of intent on Monday, and you have a second letter of intent on Wednesday, which is basically what's gonna happen, then you have two competing letters of intent. So my question is, does staff negotiate, because the price will change, the terms will change, et cetera? So how, how is that evaluated? So a letter of intent doesn't tie up the property. That's, that's why I'm here today.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
But wouldn't you, if you accept a letter of intent, the terms of that letter of intent dictates that basically if they come up and they keep up their end and buy the property, it gives them that. The letter of intent is almost the same, in my book, is almost the same thing as a contract, because if I gave you a letter of intent to buy a piece of property, then I started spending money on due diligence, and you basically said, oh, that didn't mean anything, somebody gave me 50 more dollars. That wouldn't be ethical. It may be legal. I don't know if it'd even be legal, but in my book, it sure wouldn't be ethical.
I understand. That's the difference between, what I'm trying to point out, that is the difference between a letter of intent and a contract. So the letter of intent basically says, we intend to submit a contract later with these basic terms, and what the notice that they put forward is the asking, the potential buyers asking for the right to negotiate with, with the Port Authority. So if there's a competing letter of intent with different terms, better terms, more money, et cetera, how does the staff handle two letters of intent, which do not tie up the property? Mr. Commando can certainly speak for all of us and help me understand that, but if you have two letters of intent, they don't, neither one of them ties up the property until it goes to a contract, which is accepted, and the potential buyer's not gonna spend any money on a letter of intent. That's the point, is you get it to a contract, then they go spend money.
Okay. I'm gonna let Rich speak to this, and, and I don't want a debate on it, and I will let everybody speak in order, but Rich, could you address this?
So it all depends on what terms. It all depends on what terms are contained within the letter or within a purchase and sale agreement. I generally try not to give any sort of opinion as to a document that doesn't exist. So, I mean, at this point, it's probably better to have you speak with staff about kind of what's available, what the intentions are, what the plans are, and then we can look at different letters of intent or going forward at that point, because at that point, it has to be ratified by, or really approved by the commission or the port. So to give, to give an answer in the abstract doesn't really help anyone without seeing what that letter looks like.
Okay. We've got Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner, or Commissioner Suggs, and then we'll, we'll move on. We'll move on. The letter of intent is non-binding. It states it in its first paragraph. It says, this is a non-binding letter of intent. They're asking for us to give them the ability to move this to a contract, but there's nothing binding to this agreement. We can take a look at it. There, you know, I've, I've got some issues with, with the, the letter of intent itself. You know, and I expressed this to the chairman, they brought this, the firm that's presenting is a startup firm with no proof of capital. They're offering a point two of one percent deposit that doesn't go hard until 150 days after the contract is reached. We could be six or eight months down the road before a contract ever goes, before the money ever goes hard. And then on top of that, we have to pay an additional $120,000 in seller's fees for their broker. You know, and that, it, it works out to $38,000 an acre. The last property we sold, from recollection, was north of 40, and the property across the street from them just sold for a whole lot more than that, well over $100,000 an acre. So I don't, personally don't know that this is even a good deal for the citizens, to be honest with you. I know that the intent is to bring in a 700-plus thousand square foot warehouse on a 60-acre campus that's gonna put a lot of pressure on that part of the city of Placa. I reached out to some of the city, the city commissioners, I spoke to three of them regarding this, and, you know, they're, I think this really needs to be thought about long and hard. You stick a food distribution warehouse out there on St. John's Avenue, how do they get access to 100 or St. John's Avenue? You can't go out 20, or you can't go out Moats Road to get to 20. You're gonna have to go past a college to get to Moody, but then Moody Road has got an issue. Going down to Highway 19 or 309C out to 100, and we know the kind of mess that that's gonna create for the citizens that live out there in Varden. I'm not, I'm not sure if this is a good deal for the citizens at this point, or not, to be honest with you.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had some of the same concerns, Commissioner Rawls, about traffic, and I think we can solve that. But Rich, let me ask you a question, Mr. Turner, concerning something Mr. Rawls said. This is non-binding, so it's just us saying, yeah, we're interested in taking offers, but when it becomes binding, don't we make the process at that time what the commissions will be? Even though they try to spell it out here, we don't have to live by this non-binding. This is just a suggestion on their part, correct? When it comes down to purchase, we'll make the final decisions on what we wanna do, correct?
There are always aspects that can be negotiated before we get to a purchase and sale agreement. I mean, there, there are provisions in there of what their intentions are, so when you accept that, you're accepting what their intentions are, you should propose counterintentions.
Good. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The problem I'm having with this is, is that the whole reason for us being involved in a business park is for economic development. And if we lose sight of the fact, I understand that Mr. Palmer came in here a few years ago and made an agreement. He wanted to look at all the port properties and, and come up with ideas and help or whatever, and, and we didn't take it at that time, or it didn't go through at that time. Now it is, five years later, and we have somebody that is interested in bringing in a, a large warehouse and food operation and what have you, and that's exactly why they repaved and widened 309 is to get the traffic out of the business park, out to 100. So is it ideal? No, but it's not that far from it. It'd be better to have a four-lane highway from there, but it'd be better to have a four-lane highway everywhere in town and leaving Placa, too, but we don't yet. So I guess my point is, is that the whole reason that we own a business park is for economic development, and to have these kind of deals come in and make us offers. If they haven't, if they hadn't come in and offered us $2.4 million for this piece of property to, to allow us, ask us to give them the time to do their due diligence, where they're not wasting their time and money under these terms, then, then we still would just be sitting on the property and owning it, because quite frankly, Mr. Palmer, the only reason you showed up is because we got a deal from them, which prompted you to show up. So, you know, this is, this is possibly a deal here that would work. I mean, it is. It would be economic development, a large food distribution warehouse, if I'm, hopefully I'm allowed to say that. But a food distribution warehouse, that's gonna create a lot of jobs. They have good enough access to 100 for them to go anywhere they need to go without putting additional St. John's Avenue traffic on or whatever, so I just don't think this is a bad idea, let these people move forward and see if, if it goes anywhere. If it doesn't, what have we lost? We've lost six months. Well, I'm here to tell you that we'd have it six months from now if they hadn't made the intent. So I, I just think, I, I think that I'm for this, and I think that we need to go through, and we need to let these people see if they, if we get there or not. And if we get 39, if we get 40,000 acre gross, or if we get 40,200 acre, I think we're splitting peas over to little bitty things here that are, that main business park is there just for one reason, and that's economic development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Adams-Zack, and then I'll let Commissioner Rawls, and then we're gonna move, move forward. Okay?
Yeah, so, I mean, I can hold mine until we have the agenda item, and we're talking about that. I just, because other people are going about the agenda item.
Okay.
I can hold it if we're gonna wait.
All right. Commissioner Rawls, you wanna hold it till the agenda item, or are you gonna speak now?
Doesn't matter. You know, this project was turned down by St. John's County for a reason. Getting to 100 is definitely possible and easy to do via 309C, but adding the pressure to that part of Putnam County, I don't know if that is the best thing for the citizens out there. We do have a lot of issues. You have several fatalities, more than several fatalities in the recent years, a lot of car wrecks out there, and I just don't know what this does to 100. You know, there's been no discussion whatsoever about it, and it's almost like we're, we're, I know that we're not imposing anything on the citizens of the city of Placa, but all the people that live in that, the Greater Placa area, I think should have an opportunity to talk about this. Is this, Rich, is this an exclusivity agreement in any way?
Yes.
Okay. Because it says it's non-binding, but then.
Why is it exclusive?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
It's exclusive under the words exclusivity on page five. But it says non-binding, so how does that, how does that work?
Because it's non-binding that you have to actually enter into a purchase and sale agreement. I mean, this is working towards that end, but.
But how long can they tie this up under the exclusivity part without having a, a contract?
It's 150 days.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I solve it.
No, 150 days starts after the contract is ratified.
Right.
This thing could go on forever, the way it's written, is what I'm saying. It's, it's definitely written to the advantage of the buyer, but not, not the seller in my estimation. But I'm not an attorney, I'm just.
Okay. All right.
If I may ask you.
Okay. All right. We're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Thank you, Charlie. Okay?
May I? I'm not debating the offer. I'm, I'm trying to understand what happens if you get another letter of intent while you're beginning to negotiate a first letter of intent, which is non-binding? What happens to the second letter of intent or a contract, or what happens in process? That's all I'm.
I mean, it sounds like this will tie it up until this, this letter of intent is null and void.
I believe that is correct, Mr. Chairman. My comments earlier weren't specific to this parcel land. It was, it was meant to be a generic statement of any and all land that's owned by the Port Authority. Once a letter of intent is drafted by anyone that wants to make an offer or come in and have a discussion with the Port Authority Board on a future purchase of property, we would process that letter of intent. That was where my comments were meant to, to be specific, was on all other property. But if you make the decision here today, it will be binding for the letter of intent. So there not be a second letter of intent that will be accepted and turned over to the Port Authority for this particular property.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, any other public comment on Port Authority items or on this agenda item? Okay, now we're gonna move down to item B, letter of intent. I'll turn it over to Administrator Suggs to get this started.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you, as you all are aware, you had a letter of intent distributed to each commissioner. I believe there were meetings held with each commissioner from, on behalf of the Stoughton Group by the, by the Chamber Department, Mr. Marks Litten, as well as Ms. Dana Jones, President, to discuss these two parcels of land for 60 acres. It's a $2.4 million offer. That is the business that's in front of you here this morning. The administration is asking for a decision by the Port Authority to either approve or deny the letter of intent there this morning.
Okay, thank you. Would Dana or Mark, would you like to come forward at all and make a presentation or talk about this since it came through the development arm of the chamber?
I started working with the developer, the Realtor, two days before the letter was sent to Administrator Suggs and I, and then it was, then we had meetings with each of you last week. Tried to answer as many questions as we could based on, my first contact was two days before the hurricane, and then everybody was unavailable until the following week, which was last week. So, I feel, you know, our role is to work together with the county and the cities to bring jobs, new investment, and new tax base to Putnam County. So, this was a project that presented itself, and it's now in your hands.
Okay, all right.
I'd be happy to answer it.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Adams, act.
So, separate from anything that we talked about here today, the only thing that I had in my head when I, I'm all for getting any land that we're not using out of the county's hand, out of the Port Authority's hands, into the public hands. I've made that statement from this dius several times. I made that statement about with them. I'll make that statement, Charlie Palmer. If you have other land you want to buy that's the county's, make offers, I want to get rid of it at good prices. And that's, that's where my comment comes in. When we sold the other piece that surrounds the PRC Way piece, we did take a step back, and we asked to get that piece analyzed and see what its value was to the county. And it took a couple of weeks, I think, we had, I don't know if we had a Realtor who we had do it, but we had someone do it. And then that was the only thing that I wanted us to do, is due diligence on the county's, on the Port Authority's part, was take that same type of step back, look at what the property's really valued compared to the other values in recent sales, because there has been several sales in the area, and just make sure that it's a, it's a good offer based on that data. The data has changed, it's been changing very quickly in this county, as we've seen through our tax base and everything else increased, and I believe it's even increased since the PRC Way property was sold. So that would be my only ask, that we take a moment, step back, and we just get someone to analyze the property on our behalf to get a value for it based on real market conditions in October of 2022.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I don't know if I was told during this process that, but I thought that I was told that the reason they based their property on the 2.4 is they reached out and asked us what, what we thought it was, and they were told that there was a recent appraisal. Charlie, you need to borrow my hearing aid, buddy? So, I'll try to get a little closer here. So, they, they reached out and were told that the 40, maybe it was 41 or 40,000 was exactly what, what we had already sold the PRC for, and it had been appraised. Now, as Commissioner Adams, act brought up, that's been a few months ago, and so it might have changed, but I had a piece of property that I had looked at recently, and it actually went down a little from just six months ago. So, I'm not sure prices are still soaring like an eagle at the present time, like it was back a year, a year and a half ago. So, I, I don't know that this isn't a market price, a full market price, and I haven't seen anything so far about any incentives or anything else. Otherwise, we'll pay you full market price for your property, your business park, and we'll put in one heck of a project for you. What else are we here for, guys? Why do we own land at all in this type of, of an atmosphere if it's not for this type of setting? I just don't understand, but I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
There is no promise of bringing jobs, there's no promise of building anything. This is strictly a land transaction where this letter of intent does not say that they will bring anybody to the table, which it says that they will buy land. Once we sell them the land, they could turn around and chop that 60 acres up into 10 six-acre parcels and build warehouse spaces for six different businesses. There's, you know, and I brought the same concern up with the Comarco deal. I thought that the way the Comarco contract was presented was terrible. It didn't have any seller or buyer's representations. And again, we're right back to the position, Commissioner Turner was the one who said, "Okay, then let's make them put $3 million into this thing." You know, if this thing's gonna go forward, I would highly encourage the Port Authority to have a mandate that the, that the property be used for economic development, that create blank jobs, whatever that blank is, if we're gonna, especially if we're gonna sell this thing under market value. I think this is, right, the way it's presented right now, it's, you got a startup equity firm that's looking to put some, some stuff on the table so they can go out and raise capital. This is what they do, they're not a developer, and they're darn sure not a builder, they're just an equity firm. But what we've been presented with, in my estimation, is not a good deal for the citizens of Putnam County.
Commissioner Adams, act?
Yeah, I guess my point, you kind of made it, Commissioner Turner, is, you know, and you said yourself, you don't know what the value of it is today. So I think we should just take a step back and get the value, just like we did, whatever the process, I guess, Administrator Suggs, I don't know what process we followed with the last property, but we did do some sort of process. You guys came back to us and said this was the number, and then that it all worked out. I'd like to see us follow that process and bring this back and, and then decide from there. And if they can't give us more than two days, you know, that's on them, that's not on us.
Okay. I, I thought that there was some type of appraisal that was done in, in the properties out there, you know, and I don't know if they compare one acre versus 60. I would figure with larger parcels, the property, the price may go, but it was in the 40s. Is that correct, or did I dream that too?
Just for, just for clarification for the record, the administration has not spoken with any, anyone from the Stoughton industrial folks about any of this. This is a project that was brought forth by the chamber. I sat in on the one-on-ones, just like you five did with some of you, just so I could get a little more information and be a little bit better knowledgeable on this subject. But we have not done anything or had any conversation about this particular property and an appraisal at this time. I think the comment that, that was thrown out there was someone had asked a question about the value, and we brought up that we had an appraisal done within the last year of the property we sold that surrounded the PRC building. And that's the only appraisal that's been done out there, to my knowledge. And so, you know, it's, it's, the value of that appraisal is, we can look that up. It was in the 40s, I believe, is what the value of that per acre was, but, but there was no discussion with these folks or with the chamber about an appraisal having been done to come to this value, as far as I'm concerned or aware of.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Okay. I think I did have the concerns about traffic, and I think that would have to, that would have to be addressed. This contract is, says not binding, we could pull out of this contract at any particular time, is that correct? For this letter of intent?
I don't think so. If you sign a letter of intent, if I may, you sign a letter of intent...
150 days period, we have to...
As long as they do everything and they're in their side of the letter of intent, I don't think you can get out of it. I mean, as long as they do what they say they're gonna do within the deal.
Okay.
If I may, Commissioner Chairman, when you get to a purchase, maybe Attorney Commando can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you get to a purchase agreement stage, you can put in performance goals and set, so that they will build X number of square foot buildings, they will hire X number of square employees. So, we're not at that stage. We're at this stage where we're at right now.
That's actually why I had my light on was to ask that exact question, so if Rich could, can you negotiate later, Rich?
Well, you can negotiate other aspects of the purchase and sale agreement. I would say that in addition to that, a lot of times, the chambers involved with development agreements where there's kind of the partnerships or where those types of number of jobs, economic impact, infrastructure, those things are all discussed as part of what the expectations are.
I guess my point was, was that during the Comarco deal, we actually put something in that deal. And we put it in there that you got to spend $3 million within, I believe it was two or three-year period of time, and if you don't, the county has the opportunity to purchase profit, property back for that amount of money. If you were gonna put something like that in there, say, "Okay, we agree to say you are, are 60 acres of land, but in order for us to do that, we, we say that within a five-year period, you've got to put $5 million in this property as far as construction and, and what have you, or we have the opportunity to buy the property back at the same amount of money." If, in other words, they, then that keeps them from going out and doing and just saying, "Okay, now we own it, we're gonna sit on it for an investment," which is not, I wouldn't be for that, because I don't think we're asking full price here. I think we're close, but I don't think we're asking full price. So the little bit of skinny in-between would probably make me feel better if we actually were gonna have something done. But if we're selling a county asset for less than, than top performing dollars, then they need to do some economic development with the land, or then you're gonna lose me. So when could we put that in there? Would we have to do it before the letter of intent? Or could we do it before the actual buy-sell agreement's done? If, if they go through with their letter of intent and say, "Okay, now we're ready," could we at that time tell them that...
I think you can counter now. I mean, if that's what your intention is, I think you should counter now and express that that's what your expectation is. Don't wait if you're already thinking about it at this point.
Sounds like Commissioner Adams is exactly right, then. We need to back off from this a little bit and look at the, look at the price, and if we're not gonna get full price, we at least know where we are, and we, we need to counter that we're gonna put something in there, some performance standards. If we're gonna say you county business, business park, then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to meet these, these criteria that you, that you are gonna put something on land within a certain period of time, or we have the option to buy the land back. That's okay, ain't it? Good job, buddy.
Okay, all right, before I go to Commissioner Harvey, those are some of the questions I asked when, when we met about that, is that, you know, we're not in the real estate business, we're in the development business, and we want to sell this reasonable, at a reasonable price to get the development and to get the jobs in. So that was definitely part of my conversation. So Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think no one, everyone on this board wants to sell county surplus property or county property to get it all back on the tax roll, and Comarco is a wonderful example of what took place there. I think we can solve this today by moving forward, and I'm not an attorney, so I will ask our attorney to look at what I'm fixing to say. But on page four, under the due diligence period, what if we took out from the 100, because you mentioned 150 days, but that's only after the purchase and sale agreement. So what if we took the purchase and sale agreement as fully executed, strike that line, and it substitute letter of intent there, okay? That gives them 150 days to know that we, we're serious, they're looking at it, and then that gives us time to develop a, a more comprehensive wish list of things that this board wants them to do at that time. So, Mr. Turney, how do you feel about that, removing that language and putting the letter of intent there?
Well, I wouldn't do that, because, I mean, this is their letter of intent. So if you're gonna make a counterproposal, make an all-inclusive counterproposal on what your expectations are, don't...
I don't know if I have the ability today to think of all the expectations that I want, because there's, well, I don't want to vote, I want to let them know that we're interested. I don't want leave $2.4 million sitting out there in la-la land. It would be wonderful in our, in our community, but truly, I want to give them something to go home with and say, "They're serious, but they've got some issues they want to bring up during that time."
Well, then the board's position may be that you intend to submit a counterproposal today.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, act?
I, I like the idea of what I heard from Commissioner Turner. I don't know how we put that forward in a motion. I guess the way to do it would be to say that we want to draft a counterproposal, but then how do we develop what is involved in that counterproposal? I think, I think $5 million is a good number. I think they're, they build a big warehouse, maybe more than that. My biggest concern is, is the buyer actually the person that has the capability to build the building, right? In that case scenario, because the buyer's just, isn't a developer, he's just a land...
I think in this case, the buyer is the middleman.
Right. That would be my only concern in that scenario. So I don't know, I just, I just wanted to put that out there, that was my concern with what you had stated, and that's all I have. I don't know how to put, but I don't think we're ready to make a decision on this today.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see any lights, you want me to turn mine on?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so, I think that I would like to do what we've discussed here. I think that I don't want to leave the money on the table, but I want to make sure that we do the best for the citizens. I don't want to just sell the land to an investor. It's not ever been the intent. I think we just need to turn this over to our attorney with and tell him that we would like to make a counteroffer, that there are gonna be some limitations and that they need and some, that they need to come up with certain benchmarks along the line, because we're not just gonna sell it to them without, and then just hold it forever or bust it up into six, 10-acre parcels if they can, because it's within the city. So I don't know if they can or not, but there's a lot of things that they could do that would be completely out of our control. We need to control some of that. I don't care if they split it into two, as long as they take both parcels and do something, actually do something with them. So I, I think we don't need to move forward with this today, just because of the ambiguities in between what we know and what they presented. So maybe we need to hold this off and just let you try to give them a counteroffer that there are gonna be some benchmarks that they're gonna have to meet if we're gonna sell them business park property.
Mr. Chairman, that's, if that's the will of the commission, we'll absolutely do that. The one thing is, we'd like for the commission to give administration the authority to work on the agreement, negotiate these terms that you're asking us to negotiate, and work with the county attorney to make sure that we get the terms ratified in a letter of intent or a purchase agreement, so whatever might be at the end.
Don't move.
Okay, do you, do you need a motion for that, or I guess?
Not worth the motion.
Okay, right, you need a motion in a second. We've got a motion to, second by Commissioner Adams, act, to let staff work with the, with the county attorney to, to propose some type of counter. Is that correct? All right, we'll open up for discussion, Commissioner Adams, act?
So, I think this would be the time, then, if I'm understanding our attorney correctly, to, to kind of give our requirements for leaving that property with big trucks, things like that, because I think that is important. That's, that would be my biggest concern, is just like, all the commissioners, I think, have that concern with exiting that property. Obviously, we can't dump them on St. John's and through Moody Road or some way to get to 20. So we gotta go out the 100 way, so I don't know if we should be, how do we give you the information that we think should be in that and can... obviously we can't dump them on St. John's and through Moody Road, or, or some way to get to twenty, um, so we gotta go out the hundred way, so, I don't know if we should be, how do we give you the information that we think should be in that, and can beam to a Magruth here, five million dollar, I, I think that's fair, um, for a structure, and then, uh, just to ingress egress is my only concern, is the ingress egress.
We have the authority to do that, cause it's all in the city.
I don't know.
But we have the authority to do any of it.
So, so as the negotiation moves forward, I mean, presuming it moves forward, I would say that, let Mr. Suggs know individually, kinda what your expectations are, and we'll work to incorporate those things into, into the discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think that was going to be my thing, Mr. Adams Act, I appreciate your comments on that. Um, I'd be glad to sit down, I think we should individually go to Mr. Suggs and Julianne, and explain to them, um, what we'd like to see, and, um, get a wish list of, of items, I mean, they're probably no different than when I sat down and talked to y'all about that, but some good discussion happened today. I was intending to hopefully move this forward today, but at the same time, that's what we're here for, to have this discussion, and, um, but if we can bring more investment and a guarantee of something coming to that area, then I'm all for it, so, but I do wanna include Julianne and Mr. Suggs and sit down, and I'll be glad to take time and sit down and explain my concerns, and, and what I'd like to see on that wish list also.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Rawls?
So, the, once this, uh, the revised, I guess, we're, we're not gonna offer a letter of intent, we're gonna offer a, a basis, a criteria for them to submit a letter of intent, is that, is that correct? So, they will, they'll resubmit a letter of intent at a future date that, that outlines the criteria that we have in it?
The forward word of an agreement? The form of how it happens, we'll offer them in the negotiation and the comments that are coming from the commission, and then at that point, yeah, it's up to them as to whether or not they wanna continue to engage.
What I'm saying is, we're, we're not gonna offer a letter to them, they're gonna offer a letter to us, and they'll include certain things that we're asking for.
Correct, yeah, I, I've never seen a letter of intent on the other side.
Right, right.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna make sure of a couple of things. Um, I wanna make sure we don't run these people off, that they're the real deal, and I wanna make sure we protect ourselves if they're not. So, I know that's everybody's wish here, that it certainly is, but, you know, you hear the story, the horror stories about like what happened in Taylor County when they tried to partner up with somebody, and they actually gave them four million dollars towards their project as a loan, and of course, they turned out to be fictitious, and all of a sudden they lost their four million, and all they had was two million dollars worth of property that they put up for collateral to get the four million dollars, and it all went away, and Taylor County was out two million dollars. So, we need to protect ourselves, especially when this isn't, when we're not really in privy, privety here with the, the end user perhaps. So, uh, you know, I know that's what everybody wants to do, it's just that I don't wanna get so hard about this that we, that we run off a potential, a potential good. Camarco turned out well, I don't care what anybody says, Camarco turned out well, and I'm proud to have them, and we, but we built a, we built a few protections in there even with them, even though we were in privy with the end user on them. On this one, we're not in privy, so we gotta build in maybe a few additional protections to make sure that they don't just wind up with the land and we get held with the stick. So, anyhow, that, that would be my comments, thank you.
Okay, so we'll get, um, our, um, recommendations to, to staff, correct? Okay. Mark, any, any comments before we go to vote?
Well, the only comment that I would have, based on what was just said here in the last few minutes, is that there was a date in the, in the letter of intent of October twelfth, which is tomorrow, um, and considering Commissioner Turner's comments about running them off, they've already been run off by one county.
Yeah, but we're not.
So, I mean, we're, we're sharing some risk.
All right, we're not gonna let, we're not gonna let that influence our opinion, hopefully they'll understand that we still want to work with them, it's just that we can't just give them anything they want. I don't think they expected St. John's County to give them everything they wanted either. St. John's didn't give them anything, and didn't really work with them.
Yeah.
So, it's a little different between this and that.
I, I agree it's a little different, but, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The end user, the.
All right, okay, and I, I agree with that, we got to, um, gotta protect ourselves, and Camarco was a good deal, like I said, if, if the owner did what he was supposed to do, it worked out well, and it did, so, we just gotta protect ourselves.
Can I make one more comment, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, and I'll call the vote. Go ahead.
Um, could we make sure that we actually reach out to them ourselves and express to them that we're not running them off, and we're not upset with them, and we're, we have a lot of interest in trying to work with the end user here, that, and to try to sidestep some of what Mark just said, as far as that they may think we're not interested in them being here, when that's just not the case, we're very interested in them being here, we just wanna make sure that we protect the taxpayer's assets.
And I, I imagine somebody from their side is paying attention to our meeting, I mean, that's what I would do if I was on their side, and if they can't wean from comments that you are interested, then, uh, probably wasn't meant to happen from the beginning anyway. Thank you. Okay.
I did receive an email late last night from the Realtor on the project that the company and the Realtor would like to come over with next week or so to try and meet with everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, you sure would, yeah, they just need to go staff.
I think the hurricane.
Things of what? Okay, yeah, so they just need to get with Administrator Suggs and staff, and then, you know, set up meetings, or through y'all, you know, connect with y'all.
Yeah, we'll set it up through them, Mr. Suggs.
All right, we got a proper motion, proper second on the floor, all in favor, and can say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion on Port Authority items?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, uh, just a quick update, um, as you know, we've been going back and forth, uh, with the, uh, with Georgia Pacific on the purchase of the property out of the Bargeport, uh, unfortunately, it wasn't received until five o'clock last evening, but we do have an updated, uh, contract BP that I'd like for, uh, for Georgia Pacific, that I'd like to be able to sit and, uh, with county attorney and go through, and see if the things that we had requested are in the agreement, uh, prior to scheduling, to come back in front of the Board of County, or Port Authority, uh, for, for further discussion on the purchase of the property. But it is moving forward.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I guess he covered that, so, so basically, that's your next step, is you're gonna meet with them, make sure that the things that we've already agreed to and voted on are in the contract, and if they are, then we can bring the contract back for final approval with the board to buy the land, I mean, we went back and through, back and forth with them on a few issues, and I think they gave up pretty much a lot of the, a lot of the issues, didn't they? And so, it's basically a contract now that, and let, I, I, you know, I hate putting Rich on the spot, he probably hadn't even seen it yet. Okay, so, if they agree, is, is what we, what we had all agreed to, but talking back and forth between our attorneys and their attorneys and what have you, it's just a matter of us to approve the sale now, correct?
Yes, sir, I mean, there's some, there's some explanation I think we need to talk to each one of you about, as far as what the risk is, um, with this type of agreement, it's not huge, but we've gone back and forth with different individuals over at GP, and, you know, I mean, we've just been, I just mentioned, Mr. Suggs, we're on our third person that we're dealing with this, on this, so, it seems like every time a new person comes into that role, um, they're getting up to speed as to what happened, and kinda what our concerns are, and, um, fortunately, they, they resolved, I'll say, four out of five of our major concerns, so it's just the last one that, um, we're gonna provide you information, and then you can make your decision going forward from that.
Very good. Thank you for the, the.
Okay, so you just need wave of support to be able to take care of that, right? Okay. Okay, any other updates or discussions on Port Authority? Okay, I'll adjourn to Port Authority and reconvene the regular Board of County Commissioner, uh, meeting, and we'll go down to item five, public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board, it's not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the board received no prior information. Please come to the podium and, and you fill out a speaker card, um, and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, any individual who's to make public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, commissioners will move down to the, um, consent agenda, and, um, any items you're wishing to pull, and I'll start with Commissioner Adams Act?
Item B and item F.
Was that D or B?
B like boy.
Okay. F like foxtrot. Okay, uh, Commissioner Turner?
I've done none additional.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I've done.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I've put one box in full.
Okay, and I'm glad those were pulled also. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, the motion that we, we've already approved, item A, C, D, E.
Second. Okay, we got a proper motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, we got a proper second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and can say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, we'll start with, um, item B, uh, planning and development, the, um, temporary use permit, um, Commissioner Adams Act?
Yeah, so I just pulled this, cause it's, to me, I think it's an exciting venture for the county, as far as having the rodeo in town and, and doing all that stuff, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a great thing, considering that, you know, our area's considered one of the crack areas of the, of the state as well, where we have a lot of old school cowboy families and, and things like that, so to bring a rodeo here, I, I was blessed to grow up in an area that wasn't big on rodeos, but we had a rodeo, so it was really cool, every year that it came, it was a unique thing for us, we had different types of horse riding and things, but, uh, it was awesome, so I just was pulling this just to acknowledge that I really appreciate the, the Fair Board and their efforts to bring this type of event to us, and, uh, I'm very excited for it. So, with that, I, I move that we approve item B.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a discussion, proper motion to approve and a proper second, okay, now we'll go to, um, discussion. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I as well was gonna pull this, and, and I agree with everything, uh, Commissioner Adams Act just said, but I, I guess my point is, they're asking for a temporary use permit for alcohol, I, the rodeo's great, but that's not what this item's about, um, it's the temporary use permit for alcohol, so, I have no issue with that whatsoever. My, my point is, I guess, number one, do we have the authority to issue a temporary use permit, or does it have to go to planning commi, I mean, the ZBOA? Because we're, they're quasi-dutual, they don't even, it doesn't even come to us after, and I guess the next step, uh, pass that would be, um, does that mean that every event over there that has alcohol, even inside the building from now on, has to come and ask for a temporary use permit to serve alcohol?
If they're selling.
At all the, the club functions, the chamber functions, the, the turkey benef, the, uh, wild turkey benefit, the, the, uh, rotary's wild game fee, all these function that go on, or that has, usually has beer and wine, and some of them even some alcohol, some hard liquor. Do ever, does every one of them, does every one of them now have to come before the board and ask for a TPU in order to have any kind of an event with alcohol? That's what I'm asking.
It, I believe it has to do with the type of event, the size of the event, and the makeup of the event, but I'll look into that and see which events qualify or don't qualify for the need for a temporary use permit, uh, so we'll get with our planning department and get a direct answer to that, but it does depend on the type of event.
I'm willing to move this forward today, I am, where it does break that up, but I just wanna say that, there's nothing wrong with them events, they've been going on for years, and they've been doing this for years, and for us to put another level of bureaucracy in a club trying to have a money-making event for the, for their, for their nonprofits is just not reasonable here. So, I just wanna make sure that by, uh, number one, I'd like to know sometime in the future where this came from at all, and why this flipped threshold with nothing else did, you know, in the past, or maybe, and then, number one, do we even have the authority? I'm assuming we do, and I'm gonna vote for it today, but do we even have the authority for a temporary use permit? That's usually granted by ZBOA, isn't it?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I believe we do have the authority, uh, to do this through the planning department, uh, I believe it's one of the administrative functions, and so, while we're doing, yeah, so we're just trying to get the, uh, the public safety folks knocked through the process to be able to get a permit handled for, uh, the, uh, fair authorities, so they get it.
I just wanna make sure we're not doing something wrong with all them other events that we've been doing for years, that's just all I wanna make sure of.
Commissioner Turner, we can, uh, get some clarification on what you're asking, but this event, this event is different than the others in that it is selling, um, alcohol to the general public, um, in the, in those other events listed, it's typically not a for-sale item, um, and/or it's part of the event, so the temporary use, um, being asked, the applicant is requesting to have a total of six events for up to one year from the date of approval to allow temporary sale of alcohol for those six events.
It's the sale versus being just part of the event.
It's not consumption, it's sale, yes, sir.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
And so, they're asking for, uh, permission to, to utilize and to sell alcohol at the event, um, so it, it goes on to typically say, the P1 would not typically require a temporary use permit, however, the sale of alcohol triggers it, uh, and that's what's before you today.
It makes perfect sense, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I thought that's how I read that, but, um, I'm definitely not an attorney either. Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Is there anything that we can do to set a precedence that would allow the fair authority to, um, have somebody go get a temporary alcohol license for the sale of liquor, or beer, or whatever, and have them make the, the final decision, not have to bring this up every time somebody has an event there? Cause it seems to me like, the direction they're heading in, there's gonna be more events coming down line that would, um, that would benefit from, uh, that, and.
I think that, we can start looking into it, Commissioner Rawls?
Um, I'm, I, I apologize, I have to leave, um, my mother has a doctor's appointment I need to be at, um, I will, I would vote in favor of this, and I would also vote in favor of the other one.
Okay, all right, all right, good luck, um, Commissioner, um, Rawls, um, okay, um, are we got a proper motion, and we got a proper second, all in favor, and can say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Move down to item F, Commissioner Adams Act?
Yeah, so, I pulled this just cause I have two concerns, and really, it's, I, I think it's a great project, I'm really looking forward to it, I, I, I hope that it moves forward, and that it's everything that we dream of, that was talked about here when the guy came in front of us and proposed some stuff, and, um, so, my only issue is, I'd, I'd like to protect the idea of conveying the property, not leasing it, and I don't know that, from talking to our attorney, we don't have to do that at this stage, but I just wanna voice my opinion that I think in the endgame of this, that we should either give them the property, or they should take ownership of it, because I, I just feel that it brings some liabilities to us, it also allows it to get on the tax, there's several reasons, I think it's in our benefit as a county, and to our taxpayers for it to be conveyed, not leased, um, so I just wanna put that out there. From talking to attorney, I don't think we have to change the wording to remove lease, cause we could do that during the negotiations, correct? Okay. My only other major concern was in section ten, and, um, I guess I, I have some experience with this, cause I grew up near a nuclear waste facility that got paid a lot, a lot of money to, and not that this is nuclear, but it says any, it doesn't eliminate nuclear either, um, it may, I saw the faces, maybe that's why I am the way I am. Um, so, uh, with that said, I, I, my only concern is the last line of this, is that we would charge normal tipping fees for things that would be hazardous waste, because the, the fees usually for hazardous waste are substantially higher than that for your normal thirty-three dollars a ton, or something, whether it's medical or anything, and I, I think that maybe we could, we could change the wording in the last sentence, and I think that could still be negotiated, correct, Rich? In the process, but I think we should consider that when we do the negotiations as well to, and obviously, this is an opportunity for them to make money, obviously, what the company that's doing this wants is to make money, they're, they're in business to make money, um, but where we have a little bit different wording for that section in the last part, with what the tipping fee would be for, if we did accept waste that obviously has to go through approval process through, you know, EPA, DEP, all that, but if they went through all that, I think that, that the fee should be something substantially greater than, um, what we charge for regular trash that comes in. And it should be based on the market for that particular, whether it's nuclear, biological, um, stuff from a hospital, things like that, it should be, there, there's a market rate for all of that stuff. So, the wording should just be similar to the wording on the original, that it's within so much a percentage of the market rate, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, could those things be added, I would assume? Okay, all right, okay, all right. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I too, I do support this, I do know that the torch is there, I know it works, I know I have my suspicions about the industry holding that back, but irregardless, I found some problems in this on page one, uh, the landfill property, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, it's not one eleven Hickory Lane, that's out in Interlockton, so, that, that's wrong, we're off the bat, so we gotta fix that. I would like to see a site map. I would like to see a site map included on, on this MOU of where this is going to be at. My problem wasn't with the, um, my problem wasn't with the item 10 as much as it is for the time limit of, of this product being on number four. It gives five years for anything to take place out there. So it ties up, uh, somebody, if that torch did get fired up that I held at the University of Florida, it kinda ties up this whole thing for five years of hoping to get something going. Um, my suggestion. My suggestion would be more of a, um, every two years reviewing where this is gonna be going at and getting some updates as we go. I'm all for this. I would just rather, instead of December 31st, 2027, make it more accountable as we go forward. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
Number one, I've been informed that we're not the only player in this game. So we're not just gonna be able to dictate whatever we want to unless we wanna walk away from the biggest deal Putnam County has ever had. Just telling you. Because if we burn, we burn 120 tons a day, 250 tons a day in, in this landfill and it's all considered recycling, it's gonna put us at the forefront of any landfill in the country on recycling, on percentage-wise per capita. So I understand there's another player at the table too. And the only thing this, that we're gonna, the only thing that I see that costs in us or that we've offered them is 15 acres of land. They, they haven't even asked for incentives on it. They haven't asked for anything that anybody would that was coming to town with a really good deal that's in your interest, still gonna save you a million dollars a year off of, right out of your pocket, which is what this will save us, a million plus a year to the taxpayers off of this county. And they haven't asked for anything except for if I get this to work, you got, you, you got to agree to give me 15 acres. Now, as far as the medical waste goes, we don't take it now. So if they can get licensed to take it and they want, it doesn't come and we don't dump it in our landfill, basically, we don't even handle it. So I underst-, I understand we'd like to have all the revenue we can, but how does old deal go of pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered or the other way around? I mean, let's, let's do what's best for Putnam County here and the citizens and the landfill and try to get this machine in here if we can at a, at a very, very little cost to our citizens and, and reap the benefits from the machine. If they're able to get additional waste that we can't even take anyhow in our landfill, but they can get, they can get permitted for them to burn through that machine, it's not gonna hurt it. It's all self-contained. There's no pollutants that come out of this system, from what I understand, none, zero. So anyhow, I, I think we do need to move this forward. I do. Because if we don't get off the pot, we're just gonna lose out on all the chicken. I'm just telling you right now, we're not the only player in this ballgame. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams Act?
Yeah, so, so my only concern with 10, and I, I do agree with you on that for the most part, is it doesn't limit them to what that burner is today. It, it basically, if there's emerging technology that came out that allowed them to get permission to basically process any waste of any kind, they could do theirs, the way I read 10. So, and, so I get what you're saying about the burner, but this could be outside of the burner, this could be outside of the scope of what the original intent is, the way the 10's written, in my opinion. I, I do like it. It's not gonna get me to vote no, but I just think there should be a little bit more, that should be worded in a way that gives us a little more option, I guess, in the end contract. And whether that's limiting the, the types of waste, maybe. And I get it, that's, that's where they can also make some money on the backside of this is if they involve with U of F or some other university and they start processing waste that wouldn't normally come through our landfill, that's where the money is, is made, in the billions, not the, not the tens of millions. With that said, I mean, I have a little bit of experience in this because Dell, where I work, has to send many tons of stuff to facilities like that to come and play in my career. And the cost is extremely high and these aren't even things that are that. You know, mercury comes to my mind. That's, that's one that's a waste product for electronics, things like that. So this is something to be aware of. I'm for this. I would love to see us change lease to convey today. And I don't mind the five years because I, I think that allows them, again, this is still an emerging technology on the burner side. It gives the time they need. If we conveyed it, I would say that it needs to revert back to us after the five years, but I think we could do that in the contract process.
The one thing we have to give it to until it works.
Right.
They got, we don't have to give it to them until it works, until they get ready to build it. That's when we're, up till then, we haven't, we still own our mo-, our land. We're not giving it to them right now upfront, correct?
Correct. And they're looking for an expression of intent to move forward with the county. This is a little different than that letter of intent. They're looking to organize many different pieces on their end, from the capital investments to partners. And as they do that, obviously, they can't attract those people if there's any indication that we're not looking to go forward with this. So this is a much further watered down, there's no expectations on kinda dollar amounts, but some of the permitting that is required, at least my understanding is that permitting is both state and federal and takes time. I don't think it happens within a year. I think some of these things have to, have to cross over multiple years, which is why they asked for the five.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item F.
Second.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second. Commissioner Adams Act move item F forward as it stands. Commissioner Harvey for discussion.
Mr. Attorney, are we allowed to change on this MOU the address of the property?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, and then it could be discussed after they're actually doing something, correct? Okay. All right, any further discussion? We got a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, just saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item F passes. Item seven, Honorable Matt Reynolds, clerk of court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'd like to take just a, a quick moment to publicly recognize and, and thank my staff. We had a, a holiday here recently that the court system recognized. And so all of the, the entities that are located down at the, you know, the judicial campus with us, they recognized that holiday and took the day off. And we're always kind of in a, in a different situation. It was, it was not a, a, a boy county commissioner's holiday. So I, I took the risk of, of having a, a lot of upset employees at, at me and, and I asked them to, to come in for an in-service day. And, and they really went above and beyond, able to get a, a project done. We moved, I think it was over 200 banker's boxes, four or five minivan, more than, more boxes than you should probably put in the minivan, out to the record center. And we got a, we got a major project done in that one day. And so I just, you know, you always, I was always worried about the, you know, a bunch of angry staff coming in when everybody else is, is not, not at work down there at the courthouse and all of them are, you know, having them upset at me. But they, they were not. They were, um, they were happy, they were cheerful, they, um, they had a great day. And I am very, very thankful for them. So I wanted to, to publicly thank them for that. So, thank you, sir.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll move down to appointments. Commissioner Harvey, any appointments?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Adams Act?
Um, for AHAC, District Five, Gina Kendrick, I believe is the name. And I believe her paperwork is already in.
Already submitted. Okay. We actually have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00. I wanna ask her if she wants to at least come and attend that since this will bind, this will finalize it today. So that's a district appointment? Okay, all right, any others?
That is all we have.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir, I have one today. I'd like to nominate Demilla Kelly to the TDC under the category of.
Accommodations?
Accommodations, is that right? I guess that's what I have today.
Okay, and that's an at-large, so we just need a motion, we don't need a.
It's not at-large. I don't know why it got put in there such. The TDC doesn't have at-large. They have like different categories and I don't think any of them are at-large. But this lady fits the right one that's available, which is accommodations.
Okay, so it'd be like a district appointment, but not a district.
It'd be a vote.
We need to vote on it then? Okay, all right, we got, we don't need a second then?
No.
Okay, all right, we got a recommendation on the floor by Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, just saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Dana, you will have to tell her, she'll have to get with Laura and fill out an, uh, one of the committee applications if she hasn't done that yet. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any others? Okay, all right, so you know, I'd like to renominate for Waterways and Trails Committee, District One, appointment, Mary Garcia has agreed to, uh, serve another term. And that's all I have. Okay, we'll move down to public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters in which the board received no prior information. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on miscellaneous items at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and we'll move down to item 10. County Administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A great meeting today. Just echo earlier today what a great turnout we had this morning with the municipal mayors and, and staff. It was great to see everybody here this morning and talk through the event that we just went through. So it was, it was great to have everybody here today. Great staff, as always. You know, can't say enough about the, the leadership here at the county with, with the staff that we have in place. You know, so we'll, we'll just keep moving forward. Soon as I get some more information on the GP property, we'll move forward on that. But we'll just keep, uh, keep plugging along. It's just a great place to be, so thank you so much. And a reminder that there is no workshop today. And, and, and another reminder, I will be out Thursday. As you know, I've got a pending medical procedure coming up at the end of this month. And so I'll be out all day Thursday doing some pre-op stuff. And then as we get closer, after the next commission meeting, I'll have a better idea of the timeline of which I'll be dealing with the procedure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Suggs. County Attorney, Rich Commando, any comments?
I have nothing additional, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move down to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Harvey?
Uh, do you wanna say? Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't turn my microphone on. Do you wanna say thank you for the Melrose Christmas Parade? There is going to be another Christmas Parade from Melrose coming to us in the next month or so, or actually probably next month. So Melrose usually has two and that, that has been sent to administration. And other than that, I just really wanna reiterate, great job that people did during the hurricane, our citizens preparing, social media being respectful, and our staff putting out the correct information. And to you, Mr. Chairman, for all the hours that you put in, I know it's a lot. I've been there and I appreciate it very much. And to our staff, who I just can't say enough positive things about and always, always intend to do that because they, they work very diligently for the people of Putnam County. I wanna say that a friend of mine, Commissioner Meeks, I wanna give a shout out to him in Levy County. They had 106 tarps that they were willing to give to DeSoto County. And we were able to partner with them and drove down with Commissioner Meeks, meet up with Commissioner Kelly Owens, Commissioner Burrows, and Commissioner Adams from Indian River County, who brought dog food and cat food over. So we made a difference in about 106 people's homes. There was over 600 homes that, at that count, that didn't have any roofs. The Blue Tart program had not went into effect yet. So they were very appreciative. And, and I wanna say that's because of the connections that you make around the state and, and people that you can call or they see something that they can provide. These are all relationship-building things. And I'm just very fortunate to be in this county, in this seat, doing the work for the people and I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for everything you do and organize, such as something like that, that helped a number of people. Commissioner Adams Act?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thankful for the response that we had for the hurricane. I, I think that staff did a great job, emergency services people did a great job. The majority of our citizens did a very good job. I'll say this, I was very happy that when we, when we came out of it and I was taking some time and driving around my district and look at things and, and check things out. I, I'm sure all of us were, that people were heeding the warnings and staying off the streets and doing that type of thing, allowing the professionals to do it, allowing us to do it in our capacity on a limited basis. Obviously, we don't wanna get in the way of people fixing lines and that type of stuff. But it was good to be able to be aware of the few things. And there wasn't a lot in District Five that was reported or that I, that I saw and brought to people's attention. So that, that's the good news. And just very happy with the response and everything that staff did. And I tried to run a little bit of interference with some political-type nature stuff that came from the community. And you kinda referenced a little bit, JR, and I was trying to keep that from you because we had real jobs to do and sometimes, and then maybe this will lose me a few votes, I don't really care. But if you're out there in the world and there's people that their houses are underwater, I have very little understanding and respect for you when you're worried about some branches in your yard the day after a hurricane. And we know for a fact that there's people whose lives in this community are affected. And it, it angered me, it did. I responded to that email, I'm glad that none of the staff did. I responded the way I did purposefully. And I just wanna let you guys know that I, it was very upsetting to me. And while I know that people are out there doing the job they're supposed to be doing, there was a few people out of the 75,000 citizens who were being real ballbusters and shouldn't have been. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Adams Act and Mr. Turner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things. First, I'd like to add my thanks to you for being out there. I realize what it takes to be chairman during an event, how much time it takes along with staff. So my thanks to you and staff. The, uh, we're losing somebody in the county and I always hate losing one of the good guys. We're losing Neelda. She's our MSBU coordinator and she's just one of the good guys. She does a heck of a job and she's, I don't believe I've ever seen her when she wasn't smiling either. Right after somebody just chewed her out over a ditch or a road or something. She's just such a pleasant person and I hate the, I hate losing Neelda. But the good thing is, it looks like that we've hired David Parsons to be our new MSBU coordinator for anybody that doesn't know. So good luck to you, David. I know you'll do well. And hopefully Princess doesn't make you do things you don't want to do about it. So if anybody needs anything, you might wanna call her instead of him to find out if you can get it or not. Sorry, David. Also, I meant to talk to you about this before the meeting started, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot. We found an issue, we found an issue with the record. When we switched over to the new software system, we only mitigated a certain amount of existing data into the new software system. What's come to light that nobody really ever thought about is, is in today's insurance world, if you have had your roof redone, within since 2008, you beat a certain code mitigation requirement. And as of right now, you can't, there's only certain, certain ways back that you can figure out if your roof was put on after '08 up till that time. Doesn't really affect our company at all, but for people that give wind mitigation letters for insurance, for people to be able to buy insurance on their homes, it affects them big time because they either end up not being able to buy insurance because they can't prove it was done after that time or some, or there are other fallout from it. So we need to find out if there's a way that we can find that data. It's still around, it's just not public right now because it wasn't mitigated to the new software. So if we could figure out a way to let the public get back in that system like they used to could to see when that roof was done, if it was done after '08, then the, the. done, if it was done after '08, then the, the home inspectors, which is who it mostly affects, is, can sign off on that the wind, that the roof was put on after the '07 code changes were, had taken place. And then they can actually buy insurance. Right now, there, can't nobody write them insurance that they're having to go straight to citizens. Nobody else has given to them. So, I meant to talk to y'all about that earlier, but a bit. And so, thank you. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. My closing comments was just, I don't know what else could be said. More could be said about our team here at the county, emergency services, VOCC side, all the cooperation. The sheriff's department is always there, police department, the local municipalities, school board, you know, everybody that just pulled together for the, to prepare for this hurricane. And we were truly blessed. So, it was special for me to, to spend that much time out at the EOC. But also, just really to two young men that were involved in, JR Grimes is public safety director and chief, fire chief Chad Hutchinson. I watched them grow up and just to see them in their professional capacities and making decisions, along with all the other staff that pulled together, was special for me. And we truly, we truly were blessed. So, that's my closing comments. Commissioners, as we said, we do not have a 2 o'clock workshop. So, if there's no further business coming aboard, we stand adjourned.